Quite a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi Susan.
Hi Karen. Do you guys see like, does it look like the light is on my?
It's kind of, it's like it's uh.
Yeah.
It's, it's okay though, I mean, not a huge deal. Just looks like a TV screen that isn't.
I don't know what it would be.
It looks like you're staring into a microwave.
Real quick.
Like I'm what?
Staring into a microwave.
Staring into a microwave, I am, it's just the microwaves coming out. I wonder, there's a, there's like a television screen in front of me, I wonder if that. It's one of those ones that senses when you're in front of it though and turns on, so I don't actually know how to turn it.
Is this better lighting for me or this, or doesn't it matter?
Uh, this, I, this one is better, I think.
Okay, I'm on a loner computer and I don't like, don't care for it.
I'm light too. This is all headlights, I think.
Yeah, you look fine.
Shows my gray hair.
I wish I had your hair. Is anybody not coming? Does anybody know from the commission?
Uh, everyone responded that they were coming.
Okay, awesome. Three minutes away.
Absolutely down.
It's still there, slightly better, maybe.
That's better.
Better?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a bit better, yeah.
Okay.
Hi Brett.
Hi Brett.
This is like deja vu, seeing everybody back in there.
Yeah, I know, everybody's in their little areas that they work for.
Um, so folks that are here, do we have any questions or need any refreshers on how it goes when we're in WebEx? As a reminder, we do roll call vote, remember, so you'll need to unmute yourself to vote, Nellie will call your names.
Oh, and um, if you can put your hand up when you're saying your name, so I have a visual as well, that would be very helpful.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
See? Yeah, yeah.
Oh weird, I'm getting some weird warnings that you can't see me, so, okay.
And we can see you.
Alright.
You're on here twice.
You're on twice, yeah.
Yeah, I don't understand what that's all about, I'm wondering if I can get rid of this one. But there's no echo or anything like that, so it's good.
Someone gonna tell me when we're live?
What's that?
Will someone tell me when we're rolling? Or should I just start?
It's seven o'clock.
Jane?
Hold on.
Jane, do we need to do something to make sure we're live, or are we just ready to go? I can't remember.
We are live. Well, is someone recording, is Nellie recording it?
Yes, I will hit record right now.
Good evening everyone, I call this meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission to order. Today is December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. We are back to meeting virtually on this WebEx platform due to the COVID safety precautions. As a reminder, at our virtual meetings, everyone please raise your hand to be called before speaking and hold it high. And staff will again take roll call votes. First, we have approval of the minutes of the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion and a second? You can go, just go ahead, don't be called on.
I'll give the motion.
Say you're, say who you are, Commissioner Rudolph.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Penn, second.
Right, any discussion about the minutes from October twenty-fifth? Okay, Nellie, will you take role?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quam?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Aye.
Commissioner Penn?
Aye.
And Commissioner Sturza? Oh, I think you are muted, maybe? Commissioner Sturza? Uh, Commissioner Sturza, can you hear me?
She said she was having problems and had to log back on, so maybe she's still having problems.
Okay.
Commissioner Sturza? Alright, so can we proceed because that's a majority?
Yes, uh, so that is majority and the motion passes.
Thanks, Nellie. Okay, next we have open forum, we have that every month. Um, there's a phone number to call in live and I'll say it a few times throughout the meeting because it's the same phone number that people can call in for the public hearing and it's the same every month. It's also on the agenda. Uh, open forum is an opportunity for the public to address the planning commission on items not on the agenda to share during our meeting. Call or right ahead of the meeting or call in live at six one two eight six one zero six five one. Six one two eight six one zero six five one. All information for participating in our meetings either in the pub, in the open forum or the public hearing are online on the city of Richfield's website under city government, planning commission, and then agendas and minutes. So open forum is available to the public at every meeting, emails and voicemails can be sent in ahead of time, do we have any of those this month? Or the last, from the last two months, staff?
I believe he said we did not, and all items that I received were related to the public hearing.
Thank you. Alright, do we have any callers on the line for for the open forum?
Uh, Chair Quam, we do not have any callers right now.
Okay. So that, uh, like I said, that's available every month, it's the same process and it's for things that aren't on the agenda. Uh, so I'll close the po, the open forum, sorry. Uh, next we have approval of tonight's agenda, is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Commissioner Rudolph, there's a motion to approve the agenda?
Second. Commissioner Keneely, seconds.
Thank you. Any discussion? This is Chair Quam and I, um, I have a proposal for a switch in the order, it's, it's minor, but I got some feedback that there was a little confusion about the recommendation that we're gonna vote on to continue one of the public hearings to January, so, so that some people aren't waiting for a public hearing that probably won't happen, we haven't voted yet. Um, I'm proposing that we just switch the order, the two public hearing items, so that we can vote earlier on whether we're gonna continue the microbrewery, uh, public hearing. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay, so it's just an order change on the agenda, so I move that, what I just said, that we put the second public hearing item about the microbrewery first under the public hearings heading. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye, uh, no, sorry, Nellie, would you take role?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quam?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg? Uh, Commissioner Rosenberg, I think you are muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Rudolph?
Aye.
Commissioner Penn?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Um, all ayes, uh, and the motion passes.
Thank you. So that means our next agenda item is under public hearings and it is asking the commission to consider a to, to continue a public hearing to consider a request for an amended planned unit development, final development plan, and conditional use permit to allow a microbrewery and brew pub slash taproom at six four oh two Lindell Avenue South. Um, staff, do you have a report on that?
I'm not hearing it very well. Sure.
Just a moment while we work out some audio problem.
I, I can tell it's been a while. We're all, uh, new to this again.
Chair Quam, maybe I can move ahead with this one while Ryan works on his audio.
Sure, thank you.
So in particular, related to the pro, proposal for a brewery um, as part of the Lindell Gardens development, that developer requested, um, that their item be postponed to January, um, they are continuing to work with the neighbors on, um, some issues that they have identified. Uh, so we're recommending that you continue the public hearing to that next meeting, um, for that reason.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? And this isn't a public hearing, it's, it's just us voting. Correct, yeah. So I move that we continue a public, I move that we continue a public hearing to consider an amendment to the conditional use permit, final development plans, and planned unit development at six four oh two Lindell Avenue South to January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, that's our next regular planning commission meeting, is there a second?
Commissioner Keneely, seconds.
Alright, any discussion? Nellie, would you take roll call?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quam?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Aye.
Commissioner Penn?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
All ayes and the motion passes.
Alright, thank you. That brings us to our public hearing, um. This public hearing is to consider a request for a planned unit development, final development plan, and conditional use permit for a mixed-use building at one oh one sixty-sixth Street East. at one oh one sixty-sixth Street East. Um, the number, just to jot down, is six one two eight six one zero six five one, and you'll be given some instructions, staff, could you read your report?
Chair Quam, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Sounds good. The request before you tonight was submitted by North Bay Companies, which is for land use approvals for a mixed-use development at one oh one sixty-sixth Street East. The proposal consists of eighty-two residential units and approximately twenty-eight hundred square feet of commercial space within a five-story building. Subject property is zone plan mixed-use and is guided as mixed-use by the twenty forty Conference of Plan. Over the last several years, a series of land use approvals for the development generally known as the ME were granted to the previous owner of the subject site. The site has been sold to North Bay and Co- North Bay Companies, the applicant, and those land use approvals granted were, have subsequently expired. The applicant is seeking approval of a new planned unit development, final development plan, and conditional use permit. The site is adjacent to the large commercial area centered on Nicollet Avenue and sixty-sixth Street with low-density residential properties located to the south and east. Mixed-use guidance of the comprehensive plan envisions redevelopment with densities in the range of fifty to one hundred fifty dwelling units per acre in this area of the city. The plan states that lower densities would be allowed at the edges of mixed-use, this, mixed-use district if needed to appropriately transition to adjacent single-family area. While the comprehensive plan recognizes that they're edged to districts and that reduced densities may be appropriate in those like, location, it does not require the development to be within a twenty-five to seventy-five unit per acre range. By focusing the commercial activity at the west end of the building and the overall massing towards the north, the proposed building does provide a reasonable transition between the commercial area at Nicollet Avenue and the predominantly residential areas to the south and east. Proposed development propo- provides active building uses and pedestrian emphasis along sixty-sixth Street and the adjoining pedestrian path. Ground-level patio units with access along sixty-sixth Street and the path are provided for first-floor residential units, and a commercial plaza is oriented towards the northwest corner of the site. Off-street parking is provided in an underground garage and in a surface parking lot in, behind the building. No commercial tenants have been identified for the commercial portion of the building. Uh, but it should be noted that the proposal meets the minimum parking standards required by the zoning ordinance for each of the residential uses and all possible types of commercial tenants it, allowed in the mixed-use districts, with the one exception being a restaurant utilizing the entire twenty-eight hundred square feet of proposed commercial space. With eighty-two residential units and twenty-eight hundred s- square feet of s- uh, commercial space devoted to a restaurant, those two factors would require a hundred and eighteen total stalls be provided, and a hundred fifteen are proposed, resulting in a deficiency of three stalls. It's worth noting that there would be no zoning code deficiency if an office, retailer, service type of user would go into the building with, or if there was a smaller restaurant and one of these types of tenants were proposed or located in the building. In a mixed-use building, there would likely be periods where residential tenant usage is not at peak demand when the restaurant peaks would occur. Access to the parking areas would be provided by two driveways, one, one each on Stevens Avenue and First Avenue. Access to Stevens Avenue is exclusive to the parking garage. And that driveway does have, uh, is proposed to have a bump out that would discourage southbound right-turn out exits. Landscaping plantings, fencing, and green area serve as a buffer and screening for the properties directly to the south. More specifically, a row of arbor by, v- arbor viti plantings are proposed along the southerly property lines. Supplement proposed screening, staff is recommending conditions of approval regarding the replacement of fencing between the subject property and sixty-six thirteen First Avenue. Additionally, a proposed condition would, condition would direct the applicant to install boulevard landscaping at sixty-six fifteen Stevens Avenue, which is across from the driveway, the, the parking ramp driveway, to mitigate, uh, headlight impacts, and of course, that's if that ne- neighbor so chooses. Agrees to, uh, receive those plantings from, from the applicant. In general, the other proposed recommendations of approval coincide with those granted to the ME project, including a provision related to allowed commercial uses, specifically prohibiting convenience stores or drive-through restaurants, as well as limits on signage on the sides of the building facing south and east. At a work session on June twenty-first, North Bay presented a concept plan to the City Council, Housing and Redevelopment Authority and Planning Commission. Based on feedback from policymakers and staff after that, the applicant reduced the building height from six to five stories, integrated the commercial space into a singular building with the residential portion, and moved the commercial plaza to the west side of the building. Prior to submitting a land applica- applica- land use application, though not required to, the applicant held a neighborhood open house meeting. Um, two of them, on, one on August seventeen and one on October twenty-eighth. Based on feedback from those that attended, plans were modified to relocate an amenity deck from the, a first-floor ground level to fifth floor, and to provide additional parking below grade, and then eliminate a on-grade enclosed parking structure that was more oriented to the south, pulling more of the building mass towards the north and sixty-sixth Street. Proposed as a PUD, the applicant is requesting flexibility with regard to certain standards of the zoning ordinance. Flexibility can only be granted in exchange for a well-designed project that can be, that can be successfully integrated into the neighborhood and provided the PUD approval criteria are found to be met. As proposed, the applicant is seeking deviations, as I mentioned, from parking standards for a restaurant use in particular. Uh, in addition, uh, landscape buffing, buffer width requirements, uh, would be a part of the deviations, as well as upper-story setback requirements, and minor elements of the parking lot design standards related to the number of compact stalls, the proximity of the actual parking lot to the First Avenue right-of-way, and with regards to landscaping islands. Staff finds that the project meets the intent of the planned unit development provisions warranting granting of said code deviations, which is justified, uh, through the use of high-quality architectural design that provides a logical transition from the commercial areas to the west to the residential areas, east and south. Staff finds that the proposed project meets the intent and policies of the comprehensive plan and code requirements for mixed-use development, therefore, following a public hearing, staff recommends that the Planning Commission provide a recommendation approving the project to the City Council with the stipulations noted in the draft resolution. So with regard to the public hearing, staff did receive and forwarded three written co- uh, correspondences, one being from Tracy Satterland, uh, another from John, uh, Klisch, and the last from Julie Lipinski, and again, those were forwarded via email. The applicant does have a number of representatives that, um, can speak now and provide additional comments or answer any questions, and of course, staff would be happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
Thank you, Ryan. Did the developer want to add anything right now?
Sorry, this is Daniel Oberpriller, we'd just like to thank, uh, everybody on the phone for coming, and, uh, we appreciate your time tonight. So, good presentation.
Thank you. We might have questions for you later.
Sure.
Alright, in that case, um, so for those who aren't familiar, the rest of the process for the public hearing looks like this. The commissioners will ask questions of staff or the developer, then we open it up to the public for their input or questions, then we close the public hearing, then commissioners ask further questions, discuss, and finally, vote. Uh, so now is the time to, I'm gonna open the public hearing, I, I will open it right now, and remind you of the phone number, six one two eight six one zero six five one. Um, before we take callers, uh, we just had the three letters, right, that was what we got in front of the meeting, okay. Thank you, um. And callers, um, I also want to remind people that this is the one public hearing for this, we are a recommending body, we recommend with our vote to the City Council, but there will not be another public hearing, so this is, if you have an opinion, this is your time to call. Um, the number again, six one two eight six one zero six five one, and we'll give you some brief instructions when you call in. I'm not sure who's monitoring, but do we have any callers in the queue?
Chair Quam, we do have callers, I can transfer them in now.
Thank you. Caller, are you there? Caller, are you there? Hi caller.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Tracy Satterland, I'm at six-
Okay, yeah, I'm just- Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm at sixty-six twenty-eight Stevens.
Okay, and, uh, I'm sure you've got some instructions, but mainly to mute whatever devices you're watching the meeting on, so we can hear you. And then you have up to five minutes unless you're representing a group, then you have up to ten minutes, and I'll give you a little reminder as you're approaching five minutes. Um, so, please, please go ahead. So I hear myself, so you probably have to mute your computer or your iPad or whatever you're watching us on.
Okay, is it, um, are you, is it okay now?
Uh, I think so, yeah. Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, um, so I'm, I'm, um, just calling with a couple of concerns about the project, um. F- first and foremost, I think for the last couple of years, the neighborhood has been concerned mostly about the size, being, it seems awfully large for the small area that it's getting put on, and it's just increased in size. We were concerned when it was a forty-two unit project, now it's an eighty-two unit project. We're concerned about the parking and, um, where it, it, the fact that you have to pay to park, to have a parking spot, we're worried that there's going to be a lot of parking on our streets, which we're not used to and, and are not looking forward to, and concerned about the safety of the little kids that are playing and walking out in the streets, and the dog walkers, and et cetera. Um, we, we were hoping that the developer would include parking in the rent so that it would be more likely that everyone would with a car would park in the parking garage rather than out on the street. We're also concerned about where visitors are going to park, um, there doesn't seem to be any open spaces available for visitors for parking, so they'll automatically be out on the street, and then also the, um, parking for, especially if there's a large restaurant there, and there're short spaces anyway, um, they're all gonna be parking hu- in our, on our neighborhood streets as well. Um, the other concern is, um, well, um, at one of the open houses, the last open house, the developer had indicated that he would not put in the eighty-two units as he proposed, but go back to the seventy-five units in the original plan, and now we see that it's been bumped back up to eighty-two units, and, um, at the very least, we'd like it to go back to the seventy-five units that he said he was gonna propose, um, at the last meeting. Uh, uh, we're also a little bit, uh, concerned about his, how he'll work with the neighbors directly adjacent to the project. Um, he didn't show a whole lot of concern regarding how, um, the the ramp for the parking garage would affect the neighbor directly across the street, um. He actually told that resident that, um, maybe he could buy reflective film for his windows. That doesn't seem to be a very concerning response to somebody who could potentially have headlights coming in and out of his house on a regular basis. And I don't know that plantings are gonna really do a whole lot to shield the homeowner from, from those headlights. Also, the neighbor directly adjacent, um, the parking garage door into the parking ramp faces their house, it's directly facing their house. And there's a concern that there's gonna be noise from that garage door opening and shutting, and then just the lighting, the ambient lighting, isn't that gonna be disruptive for those homeowners that are? I mean, it's very, very close to that, um, parking garage driveway. Um, I guess I would have liked to have thought that the Planning Commission would be a little more proactive than reactive, but that seems to be the direction we're going, and so as a neighborhood, we would like to know if we start experiencing the issues that we're concerned about, what are our options at that point, once the building is built? What can the city do to assist the homeowners with parking issues and noise issues and disruption of their everyday life issues due to noise and ambient lighting and et cetera, so I guess that's what I'm looking for at this point, is, is some, some idea of what we as homeowners can do down the road if we start experiencing the issues that we're concerned about. Yeah, I guess that's, that's all I have to say at the moment, um, thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. And staff will collect questions and answer all of them together at the end, um, if you have questions as well as comments. Okay, we're ready for the next caller?
Chair Quam, I will transfer them in now.
Thanks. Are you there, caller?
Idea of what we as homeowners can do down the road if we start experiencing the issues that we're concerned about. Yeah, I guess that, that's all I have to say at the moment, um, thank you for your time.
So a little bit of technical issues there, I think that was repeat of part of our first caller. Um, this, I'll wait till it says there's another, okay, caller?
Yes, hi.
Hi, um, go ahead and state your name and your address, and, um, you have up to five minutes, and mute whatever devices you're listening on, go ahead.
Uh, yes, my name is Kathy Bender, sixty-six thirty-seven Stevens Avenue. And my concern is Tracy mentioned a lot of them, and I would agree with that, with the exception that I don't even want to go up to seventy-fives. Um, I have a real problem, this is drastically going to change our quiet neighborhood. Um, we've said before, and we didn't hear, and I'm hoping that what, you will, um, listen again, we are not part of the hub, we are a residential neighborhood that had a church in, in that, in that space. And now we're looking at eighty-two units, which is drastically going to change our neighborhood, we have a lot of double lots, so we have low number of houses within our neighborhood. Um, my concern about the city of Richfield right now, I, 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 I think you guys do a lot of things right. I think you're missing up by changing what your tagline is, the urban hometown, and where, you know, you kind of want to bring in these residents, and you're chopping away at these nice post-World War II kind of building neighborhoods of low density. I don't want to live in Minneapolis, and that's what it seems like you're trying to do by going into all of these big multi-unit, um, apartment buildings, and the idea of a, a restaurant going in that space horrifies me because we've had nothing but problems when the Lakes Buffet opened up with, with the stench permeating throughout the neighborhood. We have another restaurant, that's just gonna add to it. Um, yes, we are adjacent to the hub, and, but those are quiet businesses that are- Um, yes, we are adjacent to the hub and, but those are quiet businesses that are close to, uh, nickel it by us. We're not part of the hub. Um, so I guess my main concern is that this scope of this project is, is too big for the piece of land. Um, and for the record, the arborvities that you mentioned before are privately owned by the residents that live in that house. So, um, you know, that is something to consider as well. And the last time we got noticed, for the last, um, open house, some people got the postcard the day after the event or the day of the event. Um, it was mailed out quite late, so we really haven't had a lot of notice, um, given. And I don't really feel that the developer really is invested in, in becoming part of this neighborhood. Um, so I guess that's my, my big concern is that the scope of this was large to begin with, and now it's just larger. We have children in the neighborhood that play in this, that occasionally chase balls into the street. Um, and we have walkers and things like that. So security and safety for the residents and walkers is a real concern. Um, getting onto sixty-sixth Street from Stevens is, it can be quite challenging with the low volume of cars that we have in the neighborhood right now. To triple that number will just make getting onto sixty-sixth Street off of Stevens, um, pretty much next to impossible. Um, so I guess that's my concern is I just wish that you would reconsider that residents who have spent a lot of time and money in their homes and beautifying them, um, get heard that these apartment buildings going in, again, they're not typically going to be people that are invested in the, in the, in the city and the neighborhood and the community, um, as a general rule, because apartments, people may live there for ten years, but most people live in apartments for one or two years. So you're going to have a lot of turnover, and again, visitors have no place to park. So that would be, um, I guess that's all I have to say. And I just hope that you will rethink about the scope of this project and bring the number down. It's not the residents' fault that he spent a lot of money on this property, um, without getting approval with, you know, by almost tripling what the previous thing that it had been okayed for. So, um, I just ask you to please think of the long, long-term residents that have been living in this neighborhood and that we keep our neighborhoods in Richfield as neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Ready for the next caller?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, go ahead caller.
Yes, my name is Bruce Odell. My wife, Mary, and I live on Stevens Avenue at sixty-six sixteen, immediately adjacent, uh, to the property on the south side. And, um, I, I would first of all like to mention that, um, the arborvitie hedge that was referred to, uh, technically is about three inches inside the property line of the adjacent property. We planted those arborvities about twenty years ago on the basis of a sixty-year-old fence that apparently did not indicate the true property line. So those, uh, approximately one hundred feet of mature arborvities, some of them twenty feet high, uh, were planted by, uh, my wife and I. Uh, and they're certainly not sound or, uh, light barriers. Uh, old arborvities, especially in the lower sections, um, are, are pretty transparent, although they appear from the distance to be, to be quite robust. They are not, uh, really a screening, uh, that would be sufficient to visually isolate us from the property next door, and certainly not, uh, in terms of sound. We, uh, my wife and I made our peace with, and we're actually looking forward to the EMI development for a couple of reasons. The one was, of course, it was half the size of this proposed development. The other was that the adjacent surface parking ramp was approximately twenty or more feet, uh, from our property line. In the current proposal, the entrance to the parking ramp is approximately four and a half feet from the edge of the property line or about one car lane from the side of our house. Two of our three bedrooms and my home office are on the north side of our house, about six to eight feet away from cars that will be passing by on a regular basis. Not to mention whether or not we can hear it, the, the noise of the opening and closing, uh, of the garage doors at all days, hours of the day and night. So that is a significant, uh, change from the original plan, again, which we were happy to see. We know that there has to be higher development housing. We have a housing shortage. We want to develop the city. We want to be good neighbors. But would you like to live six feet away from the edge of a car driving in and out of a parking ramp when you're in your living room or your bedroom or your office? Um, so there was a notation in the plan about the four and a half foot setback from the edge of the property line for the parking ramp, stating that there was going to be landscaping on that four and a half foot section in addition to the arborvities. In fact, in the front of our house, near where the, uh, for at least the first thirty to forty feet of the, uh, driveway into the parking ramp would be located, we've actually had some of the arborvities die back. So there, there is essentially no, uh, uh, for the first twenty to thirty feet of that, there is no screening, no visual screening, no sound screening, uh, that would be appropriate. So I'm looking at the plan, though, at the bottom of the agenda, it did indicate that it was going to be landscaping potentially a fence along the perimeter, that four and a half foot wide perimeter between the edge of the parking ramp entrance and our house. About, again, it's probably, we have a close setback, uh, closer than we thought, in fact, uh, of about perhaps maybe three feet. So it's about a seven and a half foot distance from the edge of that driveway to the side of our house. So obviously, that's going to be a major impact on our quality of life. Another thing that we're concerned about, of course, in terms of parking, um, my wife is a former Hennepin County master gardener for many years. She was both a participant and a judge in Rich, Richfield Landscaping Good Neighbor Award. In front of our houses is landscaped with gardens. Um, we're not expecting to be able to get access to those gardens very often when people are parking in front of it and visitors are probably with the closest property. We expect to have people frequently parking in front of our yard that will obstruct not only view, but our ability to tend to that garden. Again, that's, you know, just apparently it's not a problem to deal with for the benefit of this development, uh, without much of recourse. Um, I would echo what the other neighbors have said. Um, for example, the entrance to the parking ramp on the south end of the parking ramp also requires removal of a mature elm boulevard tree. And of course, it does point directly into our neighbor's house. Um, I guess landscaping of some kind, uh, will mitigate that. Uh, and if our neighbor see, doesn't feel that that's appropriately mitigated, apparently that's our neighbor's problem. Like the adjacent parking and the noise, uh, is our problem apparently. Now, the developer in the meeting that we went to last summer, and appreciated the outreach, did indicate that they had no interest in removing the arborvitie hedge that I referred to. Um, but it needs to be supplemented, uh, in terms of both noise and visual barrier, uh, by landscaping.
Excuse me, excuse me, I just have to remind you, you're at five minutes. Could you wrap it up?
Yes, uh, well, I think I've expressed my, my concerns about the project. The previous project was fine by us. It's, this project significantly is different and degrades our quality of life. If you proceed with it, I guess that's our problem. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
You proceed with it, I guess.
Hi caller.
Thank you for calling.
Hello, hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Uh, go ahead with your name and address.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah, this is Julie Lipinski, and I live at sixty-six twenty-one Stevens Avenue. And my home is also very close to the proposed project, uh, right across the street, basically just to the, uh, south of the home, most close to the, um, across the street. Um, so I, what I'd like to talk about today is that I feel the most important address issues that we've brought up to date have not yet been addressed. And as a few of the other callers have said, this has to do with a building being too large for the site. And I welcome some neighbors. I welcome people coming into apartments. I know those are very much needed. And I, I kind of echo Bruce's thoughts that most people had come to peace with a smaller-sized apartment building. But this, uh, lot is a bit different than some of the lots where, where the recent developments have been made in Richfield. For example, on Lindell Avenue, they're all sitting next to other apartment buildings or commercial buildings. And there are a couple homes impacted, but in this situation, the lot sits sided on three sides by residential, single-family homes. That's quite different. And it's a hundred percent surrounded by one and two-story structures. So it's really different than some of the sites we've seen developed throughout Richfield. Uh, one other concern beyond the size is that if there is a commercial tenant included, tenant selection is very critical. Um, basically concerned about trips being generated from that site and also parking on the street. So we need a low turnover and low parking needs business, such as an office, that would reduce the chaos. We have enough chaos with the residential side with a huge number of parking in the, um, underground garage, and I would recommend that that be reduced, uh, the size of the overall development. A high turnover restaurant, such as what has been proposed, would generate three hundred additional trips per day, and that is just too much. And we did a, a traffic gen, trip generation study in twenty eighteen by SPAC Consulting, and we'd, we'd be happy to share that. That study showed that a coffee shop would generate even more trips. So anything in the fast turnover category is something that we do not want. If there is a restaurant there, it should be smaller and low turnover and the hours of operation should be limited. I won't repeat any of the other issues related to restaurants that have been mentioned already. Um, the, the real impact here is that traffic, parking noise, and a large building towering over homes and building shadows directly on the surrounding home changes our quality of life. Despite all the feedback at neighborhood meetings, the building's been increased, as others, others have said, and the jump from seventy-five to eighty-two units at the last meeting was astonishing, since the impact of seventy-five units had not yet been mitigated. And that also erased some of the previous improvements that had been made to the building, including the four-story stepback on the Stevens Avenue side. One question I've had consistently is that this, uh, range of twenty-five to seventy-five units on the edge of, um, this, you know, Lindell sixty-sixth Street District, um, is a range. And so how do you decide where in the range a particular building should be? If there is a range, it's because judgment should be used as to what's appropriate for a particular site. So I would really recommend that seventy-five is not, shouldn't be the target for this site. There are many variances being requested, and the need for so many variances highlights the district proposal isn't a fit for the site. The seventy-seven car underground ramp that Bruce mentioned empties directly adjacent to several homes. Hundreds of trips per day will produce constant noise into homeowners' bedrooms, living rooms, yards, and this is a top issue for those living directly near the site. As Bruce said, the previous plan had that exit closer to sixty-sixth Street and prohibited right turns onto Stevens Avenue. More landscaping and fencing are needed to screen, as others have said. We requested that the roof deck be moved to the commercial west end of the building, and it is towering over Stevens Avenue instead, and also the homes across sixty-sixth Street. So that new deck placement is not an improvement. And I, I think others have talked about paying for parking. That's, that's a concern. We don't want the congestion of street parking and safety concerns. We don't have sidewalks in this area.
Ms. Lipinski.
And actually, people have done so much, yes.
Ms. Lipinski, you are almost at five minutes, or just about five seconds.
Okay, I'm almost done. I, I just have another couple, uh, sentences.
Okay.
Um, that, there are no sidewalks in this area, which we don't want because people have done a lot of landscaping, but that does produce safety issues when you've got all the cars, children, playing in the streets. And I do hope you'll consider our concerns as you consider this proposal, and thank you very much for listening to our concerns.
Thank you for sharing them. Ready for another caller? Hi caller, can you hear me?
I can.
Wonderful. So you've got the instructions, and, um, I'll remind you if you're approaching your five-minute time. So why don't you proceed? Go ahead.
Um, so my name is John Aquish. I'm at sixty-six forty-one, excuse me, First Avenue, and I am one of the folks that, um, that submitted, um, email comments. Um, I guess I'd like to start by saying that I agree with everything that, um, that my neighbors have, um, have put forward this evening. Um, I know that we're very concerned that, um, you know, as Bruce said, you know, we had all kind of come to terms with the, um, the forty-one units, um, for the, um, the EMI. And, um, at the informational meeting that was, um, in October, it was, um, rather surprising to me that all of a sudden we were up to eighty-two units. Um, you know, um, the current, um, buildings that are on the site that are being proposed are basically, um, three single-family homes and a, and a small church. And, um, I would agree, um, with Julie's comment that, and everyone else's too, that I think the site is too large for an eighty-two rental unit. Um, uh, again, I'm concerned, um, with the height of the building as well. Um, one of the things that I brought up in the last meeting is, um, I'm concerned about, um, the current city infrastructure, um, being able to support that many additional units, particularly the water. Um, I know, you know, when everybody's getting ready for work or, you know, working from home in the morning, you know, between like six-thirty and seven-thirty, um, water pressure does drop off a bit. So, um, I would be concerned to, um, and curious to hear what eighty-two units added plus some type of commercial, um, facility, um, added to that is going to do, um, for the rest of the services that we get. Um, speaking of services, um, I'm concerned, again, as everyone has stated, about the off-street parking. Um, we all know that, um, that the developer is, um, is saying that the underground parking is an additional cost, and so I'm concerned that that is going to push, um, a lot of folks off onto, um, the neighborhood streets. Um, I came to Richfield twenty-two years ago, and part of what was attractive, um, about Richfield to me is that quiet, um, not, you know, bumper-to-bumper parking, um, and, you know, you're, you see a lot of that when you go down to the apartment buildings like on seventy-six. Um, all of the side streets are bumper-to-bumper, which impedes snow removal, and it also, um, impedes, um, street sweeping as well. Um, I think most of the neighbors are in agreement that something needs to go in there, but I think that what's being proposed is too large, and I would hope that, um, that the planning commission would be mindful of, of what the neighbors are saying. Um, and one other thing that I did want to share is that, um, this, uh, weekend, when I was out spending quality time with my snow blower, um, I spoke with, um, with several of the neighbors to make sure that they knew about this meeting and, um, encouraged them to, uh, to join in. And the majority of them that I spoke to, and I'm talking about like five people, um, were pretty much not interested. Um, their views are that, you know, we've been talking about this for over four years. Um, they've come to various city meetings, various developer meetings, informational-type deals. And we express our frustrations, we express our concerns, and they're not met. And it seems like, um, that, you know, everybody is kind of feeling that, that whatever we have to say- that, you know, everybody is kind of feeling that, that whatever we have to say, heads nod, nod, and then, um, the city of Richfield approves it. So, uh, I did want to share that with, um, all of you members as well, because that, that's a lot of what I'm hearing, that, um, the neighbors are just, they don't want to talk about it anymore because they don't feel like they're being heard. So, I think that's what I have for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. We are ready for another caller.
Hello?
Hi caller, we can hear you. Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, gotta turn you off over here, so wait a minute. Okay, my name is Kathleen Balaban, and I live at sixty-five twenty-six Stevens, so I'm on the north end of, of this new development. Um, and as you look at your minutes and your overview, I'm just gonna tou- touch on the historic context. Yes, yes, I'm, hello? Uh, yes, I'm with the, um, I'm gonna go back. Historic context, um, if you go down to point, the bullet points, uh, five and six, okay, once the, the, the development had been sold, you notice that it was sold in May, and then in June, one month later, one month later, this development department in North Bay had a session with the city council, planning commission, housing redevelopment, in one month. That tells me that our city development had been very, 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 very busy with this North Bay company without representation from us at any point. Somewhat disconcerting, if you ask me. Anyways, keep on going. If you get down to the very last bullet point on historical context, it says the approvals granted to PLH have expired. Expired. That means everything on the plate is brand-new. Okay? So if we keep on going, you might write, note that going back to the public, um, documentation where we had met with, I went to every meeting, I went to the planning commission, uh, and listened. I went to the, to, uh, public meetings, August and October, and listened. And we all made comments, but at the same time, nobody paid attention to our mayor. In the ma- during that planning and city council and housing redevelopment authority, you guys were there, or representative was there, I know you were there, okay? I saw you there. The mayor said it was too big. The mayor said it was too big for our neighborhood. Now, when a mayor says something like that, you would think that our city development department would pay attention to our mayor. Now, if we keep on going, these, this, you know, I have respect for North Bay, that I'll give it, okay? But it is too big for our neighborhood. You can look at it even in the floor plans, you know, even if you, you, the pictures that they put out there for it, it's huge for our community, huge, and they don't have enough, uh, stalls, parking stalls. But more importantly, they're pushing all the traffic out of that apartment building down Stevens going north. Even said it, okay? They got a little bump out that's not gonna allow people to go south on Stevens. Where does that throw it? Right down my street. Now, is that fair to me? Heck, no. Okay? They also, six-foot, you know, five-foot story building, X-number feet high, on the north side of that building is a home, one of my neighbors. They have solar panels on their home. And, you know, I guess what I'm looking at is, like all the rest of my neighbors that have made comments, we do not need a large building in a residential area. They speak to the south and they speak to the east, but if you look north, it's all residential, all residential. Now, I'm not opposed to apartment buildings that are moderate. Now, you're, they're looking for zoning changes, okay, and it's, if you go to their, excuse me, upper-story setback request for the zoning, we put those zones in as a city for a reason. We don't change them just arbitrarily because somebody comes to us and says, oh, we want to put in eighty-five units, or eighty-two units, or whatever it is anymore. You know, by the time they get it in, it might be a hundred, who knows? We're frustrated, and we're frustrated because we come to you as commissioners that represent us. You're the citizens of this city that represent us, and you're supposed to hold the staff accountable. Now, the staff is ruling us. This is not for residential, this is not citizen, okay? What's happening in, excuse my verbiage, but you're, our city development department at points, we're turning into the first level of a slumberb from Minneapolis. If we continue to develop without consciousness and without really looking at what we're doing, we're changing our city, and some of us aren't appropriate, I mean, not appropriate, well, some of it is not appropriate. But I'm not gonna sit and just talk and talk, I'm done. You guys understand?
Yeah, thank you for your input.
You're welcome, and I hope you make the right decision. But more importantly, you said we didn't get to, this is the last time, which means you guys already made your decision. That's unfortunate, if it's true. Take care.
Check on, we don't have any more callers at this time.
Okay. So, uh, does anyone want to move to close the public hearing, or do you want to wait, or? What do you, anyone want to move to close the public hearing, or should we sit here another couple minutes?
Chair Quam?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, is anybody else on the actual, um, video call? Are those any of the homeowners, or are these all developers? And their participants? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. This is Chair Quam.
Commissioner Sturza, second.
Thank you. Any, uh, discussion on closing the public hearing? Nellie, would you take role?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quam?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Aye.
Commissioner Penn?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
All ayes, and the motion passes.
Thank you. So the public hearing is closed. Now it's time for commissioners to ask those questions I didn't give you time for before, um, and discuss and anything else, um, so I open it up to commissioners. If you wouldn't mind raising your hand, uh, before you speak, that helps. Oh, yeah, Melissa, is there, were there answers to the questions you wanted to?
Chair Quam, I thought it might be helpful if Steph went through some of the answers before, um, sure. Uh, Ryan, do you want to start? And I'm happy to help fill in if there is needed.
I'll start with, um, just the direct questions that, that were posed. Uh, the first being, what assistance would the neighbors have with, uh, any, uh, foreseen or witnessed, uh, issues with regard to parking, noise, or lighting? Um, there is a, there's a process that, um, a resident could, uh, request that the city look into, um, parking, on-street parking specifically. Um, so you can certainly connect folks with that. Uh, with regard to noise, certainly we have noise ordinances, and those are enforced by the police department, and with regard to lighting, they have submitted a lighting plan. We have requirements about spillover and glare and downcast lights, so those would need to be adhered to, and any issues with compliance with that, now there's an approval that's on the books that we would, um, uh, be able to hold, hold them to. Um, and then just kind of going through some of the, some of the odds and ends, uh, that I don't think my presentation kind of touched on already. Uh, one was regarding odor control. Um, if there were a restaurant to be added, the site would qualify for the need of a odor control system to be, um, mounted for their ventilation system, so that would be in place and required. With regard to screening and landscaping, certainly I would point folks to the actual landscaping plan, because there was some confusion about, kind of, what's, what's there. Um, the landscaping plan does show new lines of proposed plantings along the property line, so I'd direct folks to, to that. Um, and then just, maybe I'll circle back on just the, the larger discussion about, um, the building being too large or project being too large. Uh, just from a street zoning standpoint, this complies with the minimum height requirements of the underlying zoning, so they're not requiring or requesting for any height-specific deviations, uh, with regard to density. Again, um, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, um, in regards to the range that's generally provided in, uh, for, for the mixed-use districts. That were, that were some of the big notes. Uh, Melissa, did I miss anything that you wanted?
Thanks, Ryan. Uh, there are a couple of things that maybe the developer could jump in and answer, um, particularly about, there were some comments about the garage door noise. Uh, my experience is that those, uh, those units are, are almost silent at this point, but I, I don't install them, I'm not as familiar, so maybe the developer can address that. Um, and also maybe they could address the landscaping comments, particularly near the arborvitae, where they're, um, thinning on the bottom and where a fence would be, uh, desired as well. There were some comments about the restaurant, and I just want to be clear that right now, there are no, and the developer can follow up on this as well, there are no proposed tenants. Um, so there, there is not a restaurant that's proposed to take this entire space. What the planning commission is considering tonight is, um, whether or not to grant this flexibility that would, in theory, allow a restaurant to take that entire space. Again, maybe the developer will address whether or not this really is a, a good spot for a restaurant, they think they could lease it to a restaurant. Um, but what the planning commission's looking at is, is there, um, would you like to grant the flexibility for those three additional spaces um, to, in theory, allow a restaurant in the entire space? Um, or you could go back and put a condition on similar to the, uh, previous resolution that would, that would reduce that space slightly to not need those three spaces. There were a couple of, um, comments about the way that staff handled the application, and I, I just want to clarify for everybody that when a developer comes in to the city, um, one of our first steps is to bring it to the policymakers. We bring a concept to the planning commission, the HRA, and the city council, um, so that, that developer can hear directly from those policymakers about concerns that they have. Some of the concerns that were brought up at that initial meeting were the height of the building, which has been reduced by a floor, um, now the building has been reoriented, things like that. Um, that doesn't mean that, that, that staff has had anything to do with the development of those plans, that's just our job. When it, when it comes into us, um, we schedule a study session. Sometimes we can get those scheduled, um, soon, sometimes it takes several months. It generally just depends on the city council's calendar and how full that is. Yeah, and I also, one other question about, or comment about the, um, the bump out that is proposed now on the, or that was proposed and remains as part of this project on the east side. Um, the, the reason it is a little bit different, and we didn't actually push for the signage on this from a staff perspective, is that that is, um, limited to the residential traffic in this particular proposal. In the previous proposal, it would have included both commercial, which could have been high, higher turnover, like, um, Ms. Lipinski mentioned. Um, in this case, it's the residential, which, although this is a higher unit count than the previous development, um, tends to have lower volumes of traffic, and the folks living, um, in this development will be part of this neighborhood, um, which is why we didn't push for that signage. I think, I think that's all from staff.
Thank you.
Okay, um, commissioners, staff, uh, members, um, excuse me, neighbors. Um, this is Daniel Oberpiller, I'd like to introduce Mick Stoddard from DJR Architecture. Uh, you can comment on the length of the driveway or driveline down and the height for the, um, for the light intrusion. And yes, Melissa was right, we will put in a high-speed garage door that will be basically noiseless. Um, they fold up pretty quick, so you shouldn't have any impact with that. Uh, North Bay's committed to doing the landscaping plan correctly and, uh, accurately, I guess that would cause the least amount of impact on any of the neighbors. And we can revise any of that, um, as it comes about, but we can't really comment on installing, I guess, landscaping in other people's yards, uh, but happy to work with it.
Okay, did you say you're introducing someone else?
Yeah, Mick Stoddard from DJR Architecture.
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Mick Stoddard, uh, with DJR Architecture, um, appreciate everybody's time. Um, yeah, in reference to the, uh, uh, the residents to the south of the, of the driveline, um, we are providing a pretty, um, hefty buffer between, uh, his lot and ours. It's approximately fourteen feet to where the drive would start, and then it's an additional twenty-four feet for the drive itself, so the, the garage entrance is actually, uh, whatever that adds up to.
It's forty feet. Amanda Peterson, DJR Architecture as well, it's, yeah, I just opened my drawings to confirm, because I heard that four-foot number, but it's actually fifteen-foot eight to the, to the ramp, and then another, um, and it's forty feet to the door, so.
And we are proposing to preserve the, uh, arborvitae that are existing and, um, supplement what is, what is needed, uh, along that south property line.
Thank you. Now, um, commissioners, if, uh...
Well, comment, um, Mick, can you comment on the shadow study for the solar panels, and then also, we do not have a commercial tenant as of yet?
Yeah, I can comment on that as well. Um, so we, we did an analysis of the, the, um, that neighbor specifically because we wanted to make sure we wouldn't be shading their solar panels. And in our, um, results, you can see that even on the most, um, the most shadowed time of the mo- which is about this time of year, in December twenty-second, at the winter solstice, the shadow doesn't even, uh, touch that roof, so those solar panels would not be impacted on any day of the year.
Okay.
In, in addition, staff, I think we, we're happy to provide, um, we have a bike for every single unit, um, bike rack for every single unit, or if not more. Uh, we'd also like to provide some electric car charging stations right up front, as we are a, a green building, and we do have solar on the roof. Uh, we also have a water retention system, is to mitigate the runoff.
Could you explain what you're doing with the water retention system? Because I'm very well aware that, uh, that area's had some issues with water in the past, as there, I think there's a holding pond right next door, across the street.
Sure, I'm not the civil engineer, but Mick, Mick, maybe you can take a run at that?
Yeah, we are, um, the entire site has to be, uh, because it's over an acre, it has to be retained on-site, um, uh, I forget what exactly the storm event that we have to accommodate for, but we are proposing a, uh, holding tank within the parking garage, uh, to hold that amount of water. So that it does not surcharge the, uh, the buildings or the, the city's, uh, storm sewer system.
Sorry, sorry, uh, Chair Quam, I, I didn't mean to interrupt there. I, I should have asked.
Melissa?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add, I, we forgot to address the question about utilities and water pressure. Um, and I can speak to that from the city side, in that, um, these preliminary plans have been submitted to our public works department, who have reviewed them, um, but as full building plans continue to come in, they will do that, they will continue to do that. They were not when I mentioned that there were water pressure, potential water pressure issues, um, in the morning, they were not aware of that. Um, and maybe Mick or Amanda would want to, if you could, expand in the review process that the building goes through, um, to, to make sure. I can tell you that the city has the capacity, um, for an apartment complex here, and that that has been reviewed. um, for an apartment complex here and that that has been reviewed.
Um, I would just say that, you know, we will have a mechanical and plumbing engineer who would, who would analyze the, the needs of the building and then communicate that to the city. And then I imagine Melissa, as you said, the city would then make sure the capacity was there, um, to, to accommodate it.
All right. Um, I'd like to give a lot of space and room to the commissioners now to ask questions and share thoughts. Um, we haven't really had a chance to say anything. Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yeah, I, um, just a, just a quick, the topic about parking, because that really seems to be in the forefront of all the issues. And I've been, I'm reading here about what's been allowed, allowed a hundred and fifteen spaces. Um, so if we get this restaurant in, that's going to take up twenty-eight. How much, how many of those spaces are like outdoor spaces that would are do, would is if the, if a resident decides to not have underground parking, do they have to pay for parking, uh, in the outdoor? Um, parking lot or can they, is that just a, is that part of their rent for the outdoor parking lot? Cause I was just thinking about, it looks like you have enough parking, but how much of that is, is extra? Would they have to pay extra for? Is, is it just for the underground parking?
So there's just a reduced rate for the on-surface parking, but we do have what, uh, how many stalls dedicated to the commercial right now at thirteen, right?
Yeah, you do have twenty-eight for that. Yeah.
Yeah. So we are fairly well parked and, you know, in that I'm comfortable with or we're, we're comfortable with and that, that kind of comply. Um, and we are trying to obviously push the tri-modal transportation efforts, uh, like everybody else in the, in the world. But we do have a reduced, uh, parking amount for the outside spaces.
Oh, so they would have to pay for that even if they did got the outdoor then?
Well, it's a, it's assigned because we can't really manage a, a lot if it's not assigned.
Oh, it'd be assigned each, each, uh, unit then?
Yes, because we can't really, um, find the perpetrators or help the neighborhoods if it's not. So.
Is that, is there any allotted spaces just for visitors or are they expected just to be on the street?
Um, right now we don't have any allocated spaces for visitors, right? Um, Mick?
No, that's correct.
But I think we could, we have enough. We probably could, uh, swap around. I mean, I'm, I'm in, I'm happy to accommodate.
But probably when, if that restaurant does come in, then I'm sure those would be the first to go, visitor parking. If you were trying to figure something out for them.
Well, we want to use that definitely the neighborhood will use. I mean, I'm not interested in, uh, fighting an uphill battle or, um, swimming against the stream per se. With a tenant, that would hurt the building and hurt the neighbors. So we will be in compliance.
Yeah, that, but it looks like that you do have enough. I mean, obviously you do. You wouldn't, um, you couldn't go forward without the, without the, uh, meeting the, the basic needs. But I was just wondering how much of that would be, uh, part of the rent, but you've explained that, that there is a partial charge even for the outdoor parking. Okay.
Yeah, I think we're three short, right? Total?
Yeah, you are. Uh, it looks like that, that there is, um, yeah, you're three, you're three stalls short and, uh.
If there was a restaurant, I guess.
If there was a restaurant, right. Yeah. Okay. But parking really seems to be in the forefront and I really would encourage you to work with the, the neighbors on this. And if there is any issue that comes up after this building is built, um, that you would be sensitive to that because this is a residential neighborhood. I am pretty familiar with that. I have several friends that live in that block. So I do know about that and, uh, there is, uh, there's gonna be, this is gonna bring a change to the neighborhood. But I, I would really encourage the developers to be incredibly sensitive to, uh, any issues that do come up. And.
I one hundred percent agree.
Is one of the things. And you know, a couple of them did indicate that they didn't feel that they're, that, uh, that you were hearing or that the sensitivity was there. And I would really, I mean, you're entering into a neighborhood that is well established, well kept up. And, uh, you owe it to them to really work with them if there are any issues.
I guess in response to that, we don't disagree. I, we are here. We're present and we, we want to do the right thing, not.
Right. Well, I, I expect that from you. But I just, uh, like I said, I am familiar with this neighborhood on for a lot of reasons and, um, um, it's just that, like, they need to be listened to. That's what I'm saying.
I, I agree. We didn't really have any answers that would satisfy the.
Well, there's that too.
We tried.
This game for thirty years. I know that there's not, you're not going to answer the questions. So, and I don't think that this project is going to be stalled. But my point is that you just have to work with that neighborhood.
Yeah, I think we could also look at maybe having a shared car, right? In the garage. Or in the outdoor.
Yeah. Well, anything that you can do. Yeah.
This is Chair Quam. I have a couple of questions. Um, I think for staff, um, under planned unit development, a number two landscaping buffer says on the west side of the site, the proposed buffer between the parking lot and the adjacent residential property line has a width of roughly four and a half feet at the narrowest. What is the norm for that zoning area? As opposed to what? Four and a half feet at the narrowest? And what is the standard?
The, uh, ordinance standard is twenty-five feet, but it does say that the council can reduce that to fifteen with additional screening measures. So twenty-five or fifteen with more fuller screening measures is the, is the standard.
Okay, but this is four and a half feet at some parts?
Yep. It's where the lot line, um, heads north, sort of in the middle of the site. There's sort of a, a pinch point. Um, so on the First Avenue side, um, the, the buffer is around ten, ten-ish feet for the whole length of the, the property. And then, um, the property line goes southward. That's where there's that five foot pinch point. And then on the Stevens Avenue Southerly property, it's around fourteen feet as, as proposed, fourteen and change.
Okay. And then, uh, number six in that same section, front yard parking setback. Um, says a five foot front yard setback is required for parking areas, which would apply to the First Avenue side. One proposed stall is roughly a foot from the property line. Is that correct?
Yes. So if you look, it would be, um, that stall would pull in and kind of face the commercial plaza there. And there would be a, a planting strip basically to the, to the left of that on the driver's side. And that's that buffer that is about a foot that is question.
Well, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and state a little, my feeling is that I think, um, we're busting at the seams with this. Um, we're making, you know, the compact parking stalls. We wouldn't meet the parking numbers if they didn't reduce the compact parking stall. Limits by from twenty to, to, so it would be thirty of the hundred and fifteen total parking stalls is twenty-six percent. And our maximum for that zoning area is twenty percent. And then taking out the parking lot islands. And so it's not just three stalls. It's three stalls if you do those other changes to the minimums or maximums. So, and also, um, I understand you can have a five foot building there. So we can't debate that, but I, we can debate the setback for third or above third floor. Um, I think there should be more setbacks for the fourth and fifth floor. A lot of these buildings to me, or some of the newer ones, just look like a big wall or a big block. And I think it's unattractive to drive by. And I think there's something about in the quarters, the corridors having those setbacks because it's just, um, aesthetically and space wise more pleasing. Um, so I'm not, I'm not comfortable with another five foot, um, block facing sixty-sixth street. Um, so I, my preference would be that it'd be, there'd be setbacks at more setbacks on the fourth or fifth floor. And that would help meet the parking requirements without cramming all those, um, compact stalls in, I think it's indoors, um, or doing some of the other things. And I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the proposal or the recommendation as it is. Anyone else? Commissioner Rudolph?
Chair Quam, I've got actually a few questions here. You know, I think we all have, some of us has been here when this came through before. I think it was originally four stories a couple of years ago when we talked about it and then went down to three. Um, the one thing that we've talked about previously in, um, our projects being right next to residential areas is um, my question is, are there any, uh, construction protections for residents in previous large developments? We've had a third party analyze houses before and after. And do we have any of those things lined up this time, you know, or construction damage po- possibilities?
So we, uh, this is Daniel from North Bay again. Um, sorry, we build all union. So this will be a union contractor and we will analyze the houses, uh, if they make sure they let it, they let us, I guess. But we will reach out and, uh, do a third party analysis before and after and provide a report.
You know, the, the, the next question, you know, I, I, I completely agree with, um, that there could be potentially some major parking issues here. And, um, especially the winter time, you know, um, and really I start to look at it in an equity issue because it, it doesn't hurt the development. It hurts not only the residents of the neighborhood, but it also hurts the residents of the apartment buildings that may not be able to afford, uh, underground parking or paid parking. Um, and what we saw last weekend with, uh, this snowstorm at the Chamberlain was many cars. I'm, I'm not talking about just, uh, two or three. I'm talking about a, a dozen to two dozen cars getting ticketed and towed. Um, which then hurts, you know, people at, you know, uh, even a greater disadvantage, you know, so I would completely agree that I'm not comfortable with the current layout as it sits. So. Pass that on for now.
Uh, yes, we can't comment on Chamberlain, but we want to, we are going to remove our snow, I think. Uh, that's what kind of the maintenance agreement says.
Not, not that you remove your snow, but people that can't afford to park will end up parking on the street because they have no other option. And then when it does snow, they won't be able to move anywhere other than the street. And then they may get towed or something like that. And I think it hurts, you know, I think it comes down to an equity and position as well. If they can't afford it, you know, then, you know, they get towed and they can't afford, you know, the cost of towing. Um, I, uh, you know.
Yeah, that's.
These are compounding effects that are negative to development if it doesn't have enough parking.
Yeah, Garrett, maybe, um, can you touch on the affordability, the, um, the rent basically that's capped on the affordable units? Or the inclusionary zoning units, I should say.
Right. Uh, uh, as part of the inclusionary zoning and then with the process approval here, we're required to do, um, a certain amount of units, um, certain percentage of units, um, at different levels of A M I, depending what those A M I levels are. Um, so there, there will be a certain amount, number of units here. Um, we're going above, um, with the eighty-two units, we're going above the required twenty percent to sixty percent A M I, um, and meeting that requirement in seventy-five plus an additional seven. Um, so tho- those units will be capped at a, at a certain, um, rent rate, um, depending on what's determined by, um, the, uh, the in, in income requirements. Now, there, there can be additional charges outside of that, um, which would include utilities. Um, um, and, and parking would be in addition to that as well. But, um, just to, to kind of expand on that question, um, where we don't want to be in the business of having empty lot either. So, um, we would obviously make adjustments and, um, be nimble, um, to ensure that our lot is full. Um, i- if, if we notice that we have twenty residents parking on the street and we have twenty empty stalls, um, we're going to offer ways to ensure that our residents are parking there.
And perhaps we can partner up with M T C and do part, be part of the pilot program to include a bu- a bus pass with the unit.
Commissioners? Commissioner Penn?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I have a, I have a bit of things typed out today. Um, I, I did take a, quite a bit of my work day to digest this one. There's a lot going on here. So, um, I, I think overall, I, I, I did have a couple of questions, um, for staff. Um, one in particular was the, you know, the, the, how the cop plan essentially states that lower densities twenty-five to seventy-five are um, allowed at the edges of the mixed use district if they're needed to appropriately transitions to single family homes. And that, you know, this provision, I see it and correct me if I'm wrong, is, is normally, you know, used in a situation where a developer, you know, can't meet minimum thresholds, staff feels like it might be an adequate or an appropriate time to say, you know, you can hit a lower unit per acre target, um, that's in that twenty-five to seventy-five ranges. Am I kind of interpreting that correctly? Okay. So you can use your discretion that way and staff is allowed to use that discretion. First question is, are, are we allowed to use the discretion the other way? Where first of all commissioners or staff see this action as an opportunity to say, you know what? This actually would be a better fit in general for the twenty-five to seventy-five range. Whereas this property to, you know, to, to me might make sense that way. And is that really just staff's discretion or is that the commission's discretion as well? I, I don't know. It doesn't, it's not clear on who's kind of charged with that responsibility. Um, and I want to know if we're allowed to consider that and weigh our options in this approval. Is that too loaded? Okay.
Oh, you know, I would say that, you know, the, the comprehensive plan is, is, is the guiding document for the city, cities decision making on land use applications. So to that extent, it is upon the city's council, council's ultimate decision, but you're asked with making a recommendation on how we best implement that guidance. Uh, that's, that's specified. So that answer your question?
I think so. So I have some latitude in considering that. And, uh, um, go ahead, Melissa.
Right. Commissioner Penn. So it's not really a staff discretion issue. Staff, uh, is making a recommendation based on the guidance that we take from the comprehensive plan, which the city council has adopted. Um, and, and telling you what we see in that plan. That plan would allow this density. I think if you are feeling like it is too high for this site, the reason that you are probably feeling that is perhaps some of these other things that commissioners have brought up. It's not necessarily related to uh, the density because I would argue that eighty-two units is not really that different in, in terms of a feel, um, than seventy-five. Um, but I think that if you are feeling that way, it's likely related to some of these other issues, perhaps bulk or, um, setbacks, things like that. So is your discretion related to density? Not really. But your discretion is, um, a- about whether or not it meets the requirements of the P U D and that the flexibility that they're asking for, um, meets those intents.
I, I guess, I guess to, to follow up in that, that my, my, I, I'm really relating it to previous proposals, even though that's not the current proposal. I understand this, but you know, what, when we're, when we're going from forty-two and that was a hard enough sell as it was and going to seventy-five and eighty-two, that, that this is dramatically different. And so I'm, I'm just, I, there are many things that, that I can consider in this that, that would, you know, sway me one way or the other. And this isn't the only issue, but I'm just kind of curious what, where, where that discretion lies. Um, you know, and so I, I did have another question then, um, just in the, you know, in, in terms of, uh, maybe I'll save this part for later. But, you know, I, I think in general, like, I do feel like we are trying to shoot horn too much of a project into a tight space. You know, like I said, even under the old proposals, you, this was, um, you know, it, it was, it was hard, but it was at least more workable. Um, five stories ends up being too tall. Um, you know, there isn't really a noticeable step down or transition, um, by building a five-story building. Regardless of how you decorate the face of it, it's still going to be a five-story building that, that is a five-story mass. Um, and, you know, attempts to step this, to step down the setback rules, you know, they, they, they can't be met without a variance. Landscape buffers can't be appropriately met. Parking requirements essentially require a variance to justify another variance. Um, and they're just, I mean, to, to me, these are all clear indicators that this is too much for the site. Um, and further, you know, I, I'm. Um, and further, you know, I, I'm looking through the, the Richfield's state of variance criteria and, you know, I'm, I'm paraphrasing here, but essentially states that variances must be. Um, it must not be for items that are kind of self-inflicted, for lack of better words, you know, they should be for issues that were not created by the applicant. Um, and parking variances, as I see it, and the setback variances in this instance are, you know, they're pretty much self-inflicted due to the size and the nature of the building itself. And I feel like they can still be resolved through good design changes that are still achievable on this particular site. Um, and so I, I, I think I, I. I kind of have a problem with some of these various requests in that I, I don't think I'll be voting yes for them, just ju- based on that criteria alone. Um, and I guess I, I'll leave it there for further discussion, but that's about where I'm at, thank you.
Commissioner Sturza? Just on that last point, um, are any variances being requested in this? Like, my understanding of a PUD is a little bit different than a variance request, so the standards are a little bit different, is my understanding? I'm wondering if um city staff could talk about um what, what's, like, how we should be thinking about these deviations? And what criteria we should be looking at in determining whether that we would support these deviations? And if, if variance is the correct language or not?
Thanks, uh, that, I, I agree that that's a important distinction to make, uh, a variance is, is not a part of this request. The flexibility is by way of a deviation which um is just inherent in the PUD process. There is to be a give and take in terms of relaxing or uh changing our standards in exchange for a well-designed um product. That um achieves creativity or achieves other city goals. So um, the overarching, I guess, way you are to evaluate is, again, does, does the PUD meet the approval standards that are, that are noted in the ordinance? And is the flexibility that you would granting warranted by the, by the overall design of the project?
Commissioner Sturza? Um, and I was just trying to find the um language in the packet right now, and of course it's not coming to me, but. Um, I noted that one of the criteria was um whether there was an undue adverse impacts. And that the development can't have that undue adverse impact on neighboring properties. I'm wondering if there's any guidance or insight on what an undue adverse impact is?
Um, just generally speaking, it, it doesn't say that there's no impact, so um, you know, it's expected that um anything. Um, the presumption is that uh the city, you know, in, in approving or recommending changes, the presum- uh, the um. Burden would be on the city to demonstrate that there is some uh particular aspect that would be greatly um substantially harming an adjoining property owner from using or adjoining their property. Um, the, against, like I said, the presumption is that um, you know, the, the development is anticipated, especially in light of the fact when. Um, you know, there's, there's comprehensive plan guidance and um, you know, there's a significant amount of compliance with the underlying zoning, zoning categories. So.
Commissioner Sturza? I hate to have a conversation or like get back and forth on this, but like, is like um uh set, setback issues, I'd like what the um. Nuisances that setback or lack of setbacks have, would those create undue burdens on neighboring properties? Like um, the fact that this isn't meeting setback requirements, would that, or is that not a fair assessment?
Yeah, I. In, in my opinion, it would have to be um something substantially out of compliance that um, you know, is not just kind of. Tweaking around the edges, so to speak.
Thank you.
This is Chair Kwam, um. So PUDs are supposed, are to, and I, I think there's a lot of great things with this, I, I wish we could. Tweak it some to make it a little more palatable and not as. It um intense for the surrounding area and itself, but um. These, they're supposed to be of superior design or there's a reference to superior design and so like in exchange for um. PUDs are intended to encourage you of efficient use of land and resources and to encourage innovation in planning and building in ec- in exchange for these efficiencies and superior design. Flexibility in the application of dimensional requirements is available. Well, I don't know how this project is more especially superior than another project, that it shouldn't have to meet the, the limitations. Um, I don't, I don't see that that's been shown and that's what PUDs are supposed to be for, for special things. And also I think it is, you know, um, I'm going to cross talk, but in reference to Commissioner Sturza's question, I think it is. It is um a matter of opinion whether it's an undue adverse impact on the resident's welfare and that's why we're here to vote on it. Because it's like the law, there's still some interpretation, so I don't think there's a clear-cut definition and, and I don't think it says anything about. Extensively harmful in there, it just says undue adverse impact and that's for us, I think, to figure out. Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yeah, I, you know, uh, Chair Kwam, you brought up a really good point about a PUD. Uh, I'm going to date myself here a little bit and uh, back when Centennial Lakes was a gravel pit. In the early nineties, that was when I was first introduced to the word P, uh, the concept of PUD. And that's because those buildings and all that, what is there now, work together to promote one goal. Well, that's one thing, as I was reading this, how does one building achieve that goal that something, I know, something as gigantic as Centennial Lakes. That they work together and, and they move together and the building's a complement, we're talking about one building here. And to have that flexibility and just to assign a PUD to that, I, I assume it's, it's obviously, it's legal, you wouldn't be doing it, but it just, it just doesn't. Gel for me in that respect as what I saw back in the nineties when Centennial Lakes was just a dream of some developers. But how can one building be a PUD? And maybe that's, that's what I need to, to kind of get my arms around because it doesn't seem like. A PUD to me is a planned unit development, which means it's an, or it's, it's something more than just one building. And, and so anyway, that's, and I'm glad you brought that up, Chair Kwam, because that just, that is something, as I've been reading through this, I, I'm, it's just not. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but obviously uh it can be assigned to one building, obvi- or we wouldn't have done it, but that's what I'm. I, I, it's, it just seems, uh, like I said, I'm showing my, my dating myself here, but. When I saw PUD and when I saw the, the boards of what was going to be in that gravel pit, it's a whole lot different than what I'm seeing here.
Melissa?
Thanks, I just wanted to follow up on that and, and just give a little bit of background on the way that Richfield uses PUDs. Sometimes we do use them for large projects like that where there are multiple, multiple phases. Um, I'll bring up Lindell Gardens, for example, um, where there are all of these different pieces that we're, we're trying to get together to work as one larger cohesive development. In other cases, we are using it on a single site. Um, a lot of times because we're a fully developed community and we kind of have odd or um, we have odd parcels, we have only redevelopment, we're not doing greenfield. So there are unique situations that apply uh to parcels that are already built up. In those cases, what we're generally looking for is a development, we're offering, um, or we're asking the planning commission to consider offering. Flexibility to achieve some other things i- in a greater district, it's not looking at that site. So for instance, on this site, something you might consider is how it works. I know, I, I know that this site is not the hub, but as part of the small area plan or the sixty-sixth, the Nicollet hub area, this site was included. So how does this site and the, the design of this site and the placement of the items and the elements work with what will eventually redevelop? Um, the hub and the, and the, the, the site uh to the west, those, those will eventually turn over. So you're forecasting what that will look like and is this flexibility getting you somewhere that you couldn't get without it? And, and that is a judgment call, whether or not you want to use a PUD designation. The developer came in um with a PUD request because that's the way that this site was already zoned due to the ME project. Alternatively, they could have come in and asked the city to rezone just back to um a straight mixed-use zoning district. Then they would have had to ask for actual variances and, and detail each and every one of those. Instead, what they're saying to you is that they are adding some intangible value to this area that is not possible without this flexibility. I just want to.
Hi, this is. Th- th- this is Garrett Duncan with uh the developer as well, and I wanted to briefly expand on what Melissa said there as well and. Um, I, I, I'd mentioned it a little earlier, um, when I was talking about um the density and the increase in units from seventy-five to eighty-two. Um, to again to clarify, um, part of that, um, what we're, we feel we're bringing um by increasing the density there is um additional affordable units. Um, so that brings um our affordability at sixty percent AMI to twenty-six point eight percent of the units rather than just the um twenty. Um, so that's where that increase from the seventy-five to eighty-two came from and that's um part of the value that um, way that as the developers were um looking or wanting to expand on, on Melissa comments there.
Commissioner Penn?
Thank you, um, I, I just have a question for staff, um, just thinking about possibilities here. Is, is the, is the mis- mixed-use designation, is the commercial a necessary component of that designation? Uh, or can developers opt to have only residential as part of that?
So a, a straight multifamily product could be accommodated in the mixed-use districts. Um, you know, this is a truly mixed-use product and, you know, from our staff's perspective, we, we feel that this. Fully meets sort of the, the vision, not only of the zoning designation, but as a comprehensive plan as well.
I, I guess to follow it up, thank you, Ryan, um, uh, to follow it up, I, I'm just, I, I, I'm thinking in the, in the event that. You know, that this, this doesn't proceed is, is omitting the commercial from this, a, a compromise to allow for a shorter building, but the ability to retain, you know, a lot of those units in the first place. So then your, your parking ratios are able to balance out differently, um, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, like, I, I want to see something happen here, I, I'm not against developing the site at all, I, I really want to be clear about that. I just, I just really feel like the, the site as it's proposed is not where I'm at, and so I'm just trying to come up with creative solutions, so, um, but thanks for that.
Commissioner Keneely?
Thank you, Chair. I share many concerns with my fellow commissioners regarding this project, um, in some ways it really does appear to be bursting at the seams. But on balance, after uh hearing the developers' responses tonight, which have alleviated some of my concerns, I'm, I'm really excited about this development. I um. I'm excited the transit's nearby, I'm excited that the area is walkable and bikeable. Um, people want to live here and this is an ideal space, it's been under, underutilized for a decade or more. And um, for me, bottom line, this, this is in line with the comprehensive plan. The, the additional concerns I have that, that we haven't talked about yet that I want to bring up, um, if I may. Staff, are we able in instances like these to ask the developers to extend sidewalks further past um. The actual development? Um, when thinking about on-street parking, sidewalks on Stevens and First might alleviate a lot of the associated concerns. That's my first question, um. And, and second, the, the shade study that I looked at casting a, a shadow across both sides of Sixty-Sixth Street. Um, am I correct in understanding, and, and this is for the developers, sorry, am I correct in understanding that uh the north end, south sides of Sixty-Sixth will be in shade? All day long from November to February? Um, that concerns me because it's an essential transit corridor um for, for bikers, for, for walkers, for anybody. And in this particular spot, um, Sixty-Sixth Street slopes. Any ice on uh Sixty-Sixth Street and on these paths really concerns me right there. Uh, the residents and neighbors would be at a substantial risk during these months. Um, thanks for, thanks for letting me chime in here.
Maybe, maybe we'll start on the staff side, um, and unfortunately, uh, Melissa and I conver- had a conversation about uh this very question and um. She had a more eloquent answer at the time, so if you don't mind.
Commissioner Keneely, the extension of sidewalks is something actually that staff has been exploring, um, whether or not we could potentially require that of developers, considering it's not on their site. Um, and what are the direct benefits and is there a nexus? So there are some legal questions there, there's also the question of do the neighborhoods want them? Um, you know, I, I agree with you that when there are concerns about walking and biking and playing, that a, a sidewalk's a good answer to that. Um, if there, if there is spillover parking, however, there are, there are gardens, there are people that have tended these areas for years and years who are not. Um, who are not in favor of sidewalks in front of their properties, so um, I do think that it's something that at a, at a staff level and soon to be policy level is. If we get any um feedback from our legal team that this is possible, that we'll start bringing to you as a possibility, but right now. If that neighborhood wanted sidewalks, there is a process for them to request a sidewalk, everyone on that side of the block has to sign on and say that they want the sidewalk. Um, at this particular moment, it would include them paying for that sidewalk, although um, you know, I, I think that the city would, would do everything they could to, to find a way to help with that if that was something that a neighborhood wanted.
Thank you for that answer, that's every question I couldn't have even thought of asking, thank you.
And then maybe the developer can answer the shade question?
Mick, can you take a run at that?
Yeah, um, the, the shadow study that we did, that we did produce is, is, you know, right at the most extreme uh shadowing. That um you can possibly show, which is on the twenty-second of, of December, um, and that's why it does. You know, it appeared to shadow much of the sidewalk across the street of uh Sixty-Sixth for that time period. Obviously, waning once you go before or after that date.
Right, um. It's Chair Kwam, it's my last chime in, but I, I think um this project could still go forward in, if it was. You know, if we weren't pushing all those limits as they are and, um, and I agree that it's in. What makes it in agreement with the comprehensive pre- plan, in my opinion, is not compromising on those six areas where it's squeezing that space so much. That doesn't make it, you know, in, in compliance with the comprehensive plan, it's the other elements. And I don't know why the seven extra units that would be removed to be in that range, um, why they have to be the affordable units necessarily. Um, could be seven of the regular rent units. So I really, I really wish this could get reconfigured a little, but I'm not sure what to propose other than what I said about either four stories or more setbacks. either four stories or more setbacks as required and less squeezing along the edges, um, not reducing all those com- not increasing compact parking stalls, just everything. Um, and have a really good project, so, that's all. Commissioners, anybody else? Or do you want to make a motion?
Um, Commissioners, this is, excuse me, this is Daniel again. I think we can look at the articulation of the building in terms of mass and make something a little more, maybe interesting, more interesting and um, more um, undulation, I guess. Um, I don't know that we can reduce floors and density, but we can definitely articulate its um, differences in different floors and, and scale, I think, as it, as it, as it interacts with the public realm.
One thing I would just say about the compact stalls, this is Amanda Peterson, DJ Architecture, in the garage, it, it was, it wasn't lar- only a function of trying to get in more stalls, but in fact, to keep the garage further from that property to the south, the neighbor to the south, um, uh, having the compact stalls, which are a little less deep, allows us to have our, our, our garage wall further away, which we felt would create less stress on that neighbor um, to the south, their, their home during construction and things like that. So that was part of the reason, you know, we do have space within the property that we could go make them deeper. Um, but, you know, that was a, it was a choice that wasn't as much about getting, I mean, it was partly about getting more parking, but it was really about also ke- keeping a distance um, from that neighborhood, neighbor to the south.
Thank you.
Chair Kwam, what's, what's our next steps? Would be, do we have more discussion?
Well, we can have more discussion, otherwise we can make a motion and have more discussion. Um, Mr. Penn?
Um, we could just make a motion, just to vote on, if we have discussion for that vote, I think that makes sense at this point.
Okay.
Do you like to make a motion?
Um, I don't have it in front of me here.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Uh, I move to recommend approval of the resolution approving a planned unit development, final development plan and conditionally used permit for a mixed-use building at one oh one sixty-sixth Street East. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, discussion.
Commissioner Sturso?
Clarification, so recommend approval without any um, modifications or um, condition?
Well, you could certainly make an amendment, if you like, or amendments, no? That's part of the discussion process?
Okay, I was confused at where we were at in that. I was, okay, yeah, very good, thank you.
Okay. Discussion or amendments? Okay, looks like we're ready for a roll call. Vote, Nellie?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam?
No.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
No.
Commissioner Penn?
No.
And Commissioner Sturso?
Aye.
Uh, so that is three ayes and three noes. Um, and I actually don't remember if it's a tie.
The motion fails. Um, so to explain to everybody what happens next is that um, this recommendation goes to the city council. So um, they will take your recommendation, sorry, take your recommendation for a no, will also provide draft minutes. Um, when we get to the planning commission, we'll talk, or I'm sorry, to the city council, we would talk about your concerns. Um, and then they will um, have the final vote, just as usual, but they will get a notice that says it was a three-three uh, split vote, and that the motion failed. Or, I'm sorry, that it was reco- was recommended for denial, yes.
Okay, um, so on that note, even though I said earlier, there's only one public hearing, people can still reach out to their city council member to share their opinions, one-on-one or directly, but just not in an open forum. So that's the end of that public hearing. Thank you to the um, everyone who attended, uh, developers and the engineer. We appreciate your input. And that brings us to liaison reports. Um, so again, for this portion of the meeting, there's no need to raise your hand, since it's a little more informal information sharing. Um, and we will start with community services and business commission. Do you have a report?
There's no report.
Thank you. City council, report?
No report.
Thank you. Housing and redevelopment authority, report?
No report.
Thank you. Transportation commission?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Uh, transportation commission met on twelve-one to discuss updates to the seventy-seventh Street underpass, four ninety-four Airport to one sixty-nine project, the new rapid bus line, and bicycle-friendly communities. So they, they were busy, and uh, there, there aren't minutes available at this time.
Thank you for that report. Uh, sustainability commission, report? Commissioner Penn?
I'm sorry, no report there.
Okay. All right, that brings us to city planners' reports. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kwam. So, the uh, bicycle parking standards were adopted at the November twenty-third city council meeting. So that was the biggest thing I've had on my late radar since I've been dedicating a lot of time to these two projects. Melissa, am I forgetting anything?
Um, I just wanted to mention, I'm sure that many of you have heard now that um, community development director John Stark will be leaving the city. His last day is uh, this Friday. He is taking the job as the city manager of North St. Paul. So, um, John has been with the city for twenty-one years. He's guided the community development department through, um, you know, some major busts, the uh, foreclosure crisis, the Great Recession. Um, all the while, kind of preparing the community and um, keeping staff working toward the day when um, the market would return, and we were poised to take advantage of that. Um, over the last ten years, he's shepherded the department um, through helping along about four hundred and fifty million dollars in value added to the community. Um, and not only that, he's, he's really been a mentor to a lot of, a lot of us, um, myself included, but more so, he's been a really good friend to so many people at the city, having been here so long. So, um, if you know John, if you see him around, wish him well, or send him a note. Um, we're gonna miss him a lot. Um, but I, you know, I think he's leaving the city in a much stronger position than uh, when he joined it. And um, yeah, he's, he's set us up for continued success, so, congrats to John.
Thanks for sharing that, yeah. And our next, go ahead. Oh, huh, our next uh, regular planning commission meeting is January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM, and it will also be on, it will be on WebEx again. Um, and I just wanted to put a plug in for that, we are gonna have some openings on the planning commission. So, applications are due December thirty-first. We, if you're listening, don't be afraid to apply. Uh, the city council reads those and then appoints commissioners. Um, anything else, anybody? Commissioner Penn?
Thank you, Chair. Um, as today is, has shown me that um, I can't keep taking four hours out of my workday to thoroughly invest myself in these things, I'm taking four professional licensure exams for landscape architecture. Over these last nine, ten months, I'm transitioning jobs. My child's got after-school stuff. I, I really cannot dedicate the time that is needed to do this effectively, and I, I sadly think I, I have to put in my resignation, and then this will be be my last meeting, and I can put that in writing, if you guys want that as well, but um, I, I really don't want to leave. I really do enjoy it here, and I think it's been a great experience. Um, and I'm hoping that sooner, rather than later, I can hopefully help with other things, whether in informal or formal capacity in the city, but I just, I, I can't do this right now, and I'm sorry to be putting this in right now, but thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Penn. Is this open for discussion? Well, we'll miss you, and thanks for all you, you've done. Commissioner Rudolph?
I would like to say thank you to Commissioner Penn. Um, it's been a pleasure working with you on the planning commission. We have learned so much from you and appreciate the guidance, as well as the dedication that you have shown to us in making sure you're always prepared um, for planning commissioners' meeting, and you will be missed.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Seconded.
So, sorry to leave this on a sad note. Um, Stark leaving is bad enough.
That's even more reason for people to apply.
But um, yeah, well, thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Is January your last meeting?
What's that?
Is January your final meeting, Commissioner?
This is my final meeting. I, I can't come to January, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, thank you for your service.
I'm sorry, and I hope to talk to all you soon. Thank you.
Okay.
Missy.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Oh, oh, I defer to Mr. Penn.
Second? Commissioner Rudolph seconds. Any discussion on adjourning? All right, um, Nellie, would you take a roll call?
Yes. Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph? Uh, Commissioner Penn?
Aye, sorry.
It's okay. Commissioner Sturso?
Aye.
Um, all ayes and a motion passes.
All right, thanks, everybody.